Good evening, I'd like to welcome everyone to our March 6th Work and Business Session of the Cabarrus County Board of Education. Please welcome Ms. Angie McLean, our Teacher of the Year, our Board members Keisha Sandage, Mr. Sam Tredaway, Mr. Tim Furr, Dr. Kupicki, our Superintendent, our Board members Laura Lindsay, Pam Escobar, and our Board Clerk Ms. Kristy Williams. Thank you guys for all being here. Board, I'll call the March 6th, 2023 Work and Business Session to order. We'll move to 2.01 in our opening ceremony. Please stand for the presentation of the callers and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Color guard, attack. Carry colors. Forward, march. Rotate colors, rotate. Right pace. Freezing colors.
Presenting tonight's colors are members of the Central Cabarrus High School Air Force JROTC Program, and their personnel includes Cadet Major Jared Valdespino Moran, Cadet Technical Sergeant Sidney Lyon, Cadet Senior Airmen Allison Rodriguez Ramirez, Cadet Senior Airmen Ashley Flores Morga. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, colors. Post.
Board members, before we adopt the agenda, we need to add an item 4.03, the Great Wolf Lodge Everyday Hero Award. With that addition, I need a motion to adopt the agenda as presented. Please raise your hand to be recognized. Ms. Lindsay?
So moved.
I need a second. Second. We have a motion by Ms. Lindsay and a second by Ms. Escobar. All those in favor of adopting the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. Thank you, Board members. We will now move to 4.01 in our Impact Through Education Awards, and we will welcome Mr. Phil Furr to the podium. Good evening, Mr. Furr.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Dr. Kupicki, good evening. Tonight, we will present Impact Through Education Awards to students and staff at Hickory Ridge Elementary School. Our sponsors for the Impact Awards are our friends at Equitable. At this time, I would like to invite our Equitable representatives Leo Spardella and Adrian Caspar to join me at the front of the room. Before we get started with the awards, please accept our sincere thanks and gratitude to Equitable for its continued sponsorship of the Impact Through Education Awards. We're in the 13th year of honoring those making an impact in our schools with this award. We appreciate your support, and thank you for helping us celebrate and recognize deserving students and staff. We also want to say a word of thanks to our Cabarrus Regional Chamber and to Concord Trophy Center for providing us with the award plaques each month. Now on to tonight's awards. May I have the Hickory Ridge Elementary Administrative Team come forward, please? Our first honoree from Hickory Ridge Elementary School is Sana Montgomery. Sana, please come forward with your family.
Sana has a warm heart and a smile that is infectious. She is a friend to all and makes all people around her feel included and important. She is eager to come to school, eager to learn, and eager to help out however she can. She notices the good in others and is always willing to share her positive words. Sana is a star student and shines her light everywhere she goes. She serves as a student leader in her classroom and is eager to help her teachers and classmates. We are so proud of Sana and all of her accomplishments at the Ridge. Congratulations, Sana. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Hickory Ridge Elementary School.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Good job.
Congratulations.
Good job.
Congratulations.
Good job.
Thank you.
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 Our next honoree from Hickory Ridge Elementary School is Madeline Seifer. Madeline, please come forward with your family. Madeline is a hard worker and strives to do her best both in and out of the classroom. She is a role model to her peers. She is a natural leader and is making a positive mark at Hickory Ridge. She has helped create and lead the Community Outreach Club at our school. Madeline has a servant heart and is always thinking about how to make our school a better place to learn and grow. We are so proud of Madeline and all her accomplishments at the Ridge. We know she will continue to do great things as a student leader throughout her time in Cabarrus County Schools. Congratulations, Madeline. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Hickory Ridge Elementary School. Ms. Smith, please come forward with your family. Ms. Maddox, please come forward with your family. Shane's energy and enthusiasm fill a room. She is one of the first staff members students look for when they walk through the doors Shane's energy and enthusiasm fill a room. at Hickory Ridge Elementary. She sets high expectations for students, encourages them along the way, and celebrates She is one of the first staff members students look for when they walk through the doors with them when they succeed. She is a support to teachers and a fabulous resource within the MTSS framework. at Hickory Ridge Elementary. She sets high expectations for students, encourages them along the way, and celebrates She has an excellent rapport with the students, staff, and community at the Ridge. with them when they succeed. She is always willing to step in and help when needed and takes on challenges with positive She is a support to teachers and a fabulous resource within the MTSS framework. outlooks time and time again. She has an excellent rapport with the students, staff, and community at the Ridge. We are so proud of her accomplishments. Hickory Ridge is so happy she is a cowboy. She is always willing to step in and help when needed and takes on challenges with positive Congratulations, Shane. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Hickory Ridge Elementary School. outlooks time and time again. We are so proud of her accomplishments. Hickory Ridge is so happy she is a cowboy. Congratulations, Shane. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Hickory Ridge Elementary School. Ms. Maddox, please come forward with your family. Lindsay is a vital member of the Hickory Ridge Elementary community. She cares deeply about each of her students and makes learning fun. She leads discussions around student concerns and successes. She always puts children first and works with all involved to create a cohesive support group so each student receives the instruction needed to be successful. She serves as a teacher leader and is involved in many leadership opportunities at Hickory Ridge. Lindsay, you're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Hickory Ridge Elementary School. Congratulations to all our recipients, and thanks again to our partners Equitable and the Cabarrus Chamber of Commerce for your partnership.
Thank you, Mr. Furr. We'll move to 4.02 in our Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month with Dr. Marion Bish. Welcome, Dr. Bish.
Thank you. Madam Chair and Board members, Dr. Kupicki, viewing audiences both here and watching on our livestream, it is my pleasure to introduce to you our Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for March. We always begin by expressing our thanks and gratitude to Mr. Tim Vaughn and Hillbush Ford for their tremendous generosity and continued sponsorship of this wonderful recognition program for our teachers. Our Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for March is Alberto Montenegro. He is a 4th grade teacher at Wyancoff STEM Elementary School. At this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Montenegro, his family, and members of the school's administration I'd like to share the nominations that were submitted by parents and students about this gentleman, and by the way, there were many submitted, so we have lifted just one from a parent and one from a student. A parent said, "Mr. Montenegro is an excellent educator. He's not only concerned with teaching our children academically, but with his students' personal development as well. He teaches topics such as conflict management, leadership, companionship, and respect. He helps our children to complement their education with lifelong skills that provide development for their future decision-making, as well as interpersonal relationships during their lives." A student added, "Mr. Montenegro is nice. He does not yell. He is kind, and he helps me with anything I need help with. He makes me feel like I'm important and that I matter. He's the best teacher in the whole wide world." Mr. Montenegro, I don't know that you can get any better than that. Thank you for the impact you are making to teach and engage the students in your classroom. Congratulations on your selection as Cabarrus County Schools' Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month.
with Dr. Jonathan Bowers.
Welcome, Dr. Bowers.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Dr. Kupicki. My pleasure to stand before you to introduce this month's Everyday Hero Award. If I could get Free Hepburn from there, if you want to come up to me.
As you know, this award is presented to an exceptional employee within the Auxiliary Services Department. That includes our Kids Plus, our Facilities Maintenance Division, our Construction, School Nutrition, and Transportation Departments. Sponsored by the Great Wolf Lodge, the Everyday Hero Award is intended to acknowledge the outstanding behind-the-scenes and sometimes often unnoticed work of our Auxiliary Services professionals. As we all know, there is a great work being done by these employees every day that should be recognized publicly. Nominations for this award are submitted by Cabarrus County Schools' employees, students, and parents, and one recipient is selected to be recognized each month. This month's recipient of the Everyday Hero Award is Ms. Free Hepburn, a Transportation Safety Assistant with our Transportation Department. Here with me is Mr. Art Whitaker, Director of our Transportation, who is going to share some testimonials that really speak to the impact that Free has had on children.
Free Hepburn has worked for the CCS Transportation Department since August 2021. She is a TSA, a Transportation Safety Assistant. Her duties involve monitoring and ensuring the safety of our EC students during their ride onboard the school bus. Her responsibilities are receiving the students as they enter and exit the bus, ensuring students are properly buckled and secured in their seats, and properly loaded and secured if they're in a wheelchair, and maintaining the many possible health needs of our most vulnerable students. She knows her students by name and fosters her relationships with both students and their guardians, building that strong foundation of trust with each family. In speaking with her supervisors, they use phrases like "wonderful overall attitude," "always looking out for the best interest of her students," "she always communicates effectively," "her customer service with parents goes well beyond expectations," and "she is a beam of light, and if I could clone her, I would." In speaking with her coworkers, they say she has the most calming voice. She engages with parents and goes the extra mile. I can concentrate on driving the bus, knowing that she has those children well taken care of in back of me. That is a great peace of mind. Here's what a parent says, "She is amazing. She always communicates with us and makes sure we know what's going on during the route. Free demonstrates genuine love and care for our children and their families of Cabarrus County Schools. She is truly an everyday hero, and I am honored to have her on our team." Congratulations.
I've got to get his... I got grateful to your family though. Thank you, Mr. Whitaker, and for Dr. Bowers.
This concludes our recognitions for this evening's session, and this is always a highlight of our meeting, so thank you all for the presentations. Board, we will move to 5.01, Approval of Minutes. We approve the minutes for the open session for February 6 and February 13 of 2023. I need a motion to approve the open session minutes for the February 6 and the 13th. Ms. Lindsay?
So moved.
I need a second. Mr. Tredaway? I have a motion by Ms. Lindsay and a second by Mr. Tredaway. Is there any discussion about the open session minutes, Board? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the open session minutes, please say aye. Opposed? This motion passes. Thank you, Board members. We will now move to 6.01, Board Chair Comments. I wanted to thank all of our Board members for their engagement and participation in numerous community and school system activities in the month of February, and these included athletic events, Read Across America, school visits, community events, you name it, they were there. We really appreciate everyone's leadership, and it's noticed, and we just want to say thank you for the teamwork that we continue to see with our Board and, you know, as we continue to work together. We'd also like to wish the Central Cabarrus High School Men's Basketball Team good luck as they play at the NC State University Campus this Saturday. Some of us are wearing green and gold as a session tonight in honor of the team, and we are proud of them as they play for the state championship. We even have a Board member that has yellow shoes on tonight, so we are very committed, so thank you for that. We will move to 6.02 in our Superintendent Comments with Dr. John Kupicki.
Thank you, Mrs. Attcock. And it is not Mr. Furr who has those yellow shoes on. First, I'd like to recognize Brian Tyson, our District Athletic Director. He's going to come up and inform the Board and the community of some of the accomplishments of our athletic teams and our individuals for this year. Mr. Tyson? He's not in the room. Is he outside?
All right. We have had an outstanding winter season this year in Cabarrus County Schools' athletics, and I don't know if people really truly understand how strong our athletic teams are at our high schools across the state, because we do make an impact across the region, across the state, and these folks right here represented us in a great manner all year long, both in the classroom and on the courts and the playing fields and in the pools and the wrestling mats. So these folks here, we're here to honor our winter state champions tonight, and we're not through with winter championships, hopefully. We have Central Cabarrus playing for the state championship on Saturday night at NC State, and Dr. Kupicki may have already gone over that with you, so we hope we'll see everybody in Raleigh as well on Saturday night at 7:30. We had four individual wrestling state champions. We had four individual swimming state champions, and we had three relay teams that won state championships this winter, so outstanding winter season. So first of all, I'll do the wrestling individual state champions. David McKeachern of Mount Pleasant High School. David will step forward just a little bit. David won the 132-pound 2A state championship. David is a junior. David was a state runner-up his freshman year, and now he has won back-to-back state championships. And David was 48 and 8 this year is his record, and he's coached by Coach Jaren Spralley, so looking forward to a three-peat next year, and congratulations, David. Next, we have Cooper Davis, and Cooper's family has a rich tradition in wrestling in our county. And Cooper is from Cox Mill High School, and he won the 126-pound 4A state championship. He is a junior. He is the first state champion for Cox Mill High School in wrestling. He has a 49 and 2 record this past year. He was a state runner-up last year, and he's just done a great job all around, and he is coached by Coach Tom Pavia. And next is Thomas Brooker.
Thomas.
Thomas. Thomas, my fault. Thomas Brooker from Hickory Ridge High School, and Thomas won the 195-pound 4A state championship this year. He's a senior. He was a state runner-up last year and got the ring this year, and he was 61 and 0 this year. So he has not been beaten. And Thomas is committed to Appalachian State University next year where he will wrestle. We did have a wrestler from Central Cabarrus High School that couldn't be here tonight, and that was Charleston Baglio, and Charleston won the 126-pound 3A state championship, and he's a junior. He's already been a state champion, so he's a two-time winner. His brother, Jackson, was also a two-time winner and ended up being the runner-up this year. So those two brothers have had a great career as well, and we look forward to seeing Charleston back here next year as a senior winning the state championship again. So that was our individual wrestling. We will move on to individual swimming, which we had four individual winners there as well. First of all, we have TJ Spocus. TJ is from JM Robinson High School, and he won the 200-yard freestyle with a time of 1 minute 39.59 seconds. TJ is a senior. He was also the runner-up in the 500 freestyle. He was the Yadkin Valley Conference Wrestler Swimmer of the Year, and he is committed to Queens College next year, where he will also be on the men's triathlon team. So quite an athlete. Next, we have Lane Bradshaw of Northwest Cabarrus High School. Lane won the 100-yard breaststroke with a time of 59.02. Laine won the 100-yard breaststroke with a time of 59.02 seconds. Laine is a senior. He was also the runner-up in the 200 individual medley. He is also a two-time relay state champion, and he is committed to swim at Loyola University, Maryland next year. Laine also had a teammate of his that couldn't be here tonight. He is sick, and we hate that. It was Harrison Ranier. He won the 200-yard individual medley with a time of 1 minute 51 seconds, and he's a senior and was also the runner-up in the 100 butterfly. He's a two-time individual state champion and two-time relay state champion. He was also the SPC Male Swimmer of the Year, and he's committed to Auburn University to swim next year. So we hate he couldn't be here, but that's quite an accomplishment to go swim at Auburn University. So we missed him tonight. And then our last individual state champion in swimming is Abby Cronin. Abby is from Central Cabarrus High School. She is a sophomore, and she won the 100-yard backstroke with a winning time of 58.23 seconds. Which then moves us to our relay team, and I guess you can guess which ones are our Central Cabarrus relay team in here. So these four girls not only won one event, they won two events. They won the 200-yard medley relay, and they won the 400-yard freestyle relay. So two events that are state champions. Those members are Abby Cronin, Bellum Vine, Lala Johns, and Audrey Wolf. And we'd also like to congratulate Bellum also, from the High School Athletic Association, recognizing her as the 3A state championship female sportsmanship award winner. So congratulations. And last but not least, Northwest Cabarrus High School men's 200 medley relay team of Harrison Ranier. Harrison is sick tonight. Laine Bradshaw is here. Jacob Rinker is a tennis player, and he couldn't be here tonight. And Justin Gould is here. Justin, raise your hand.
You can step forward, I'll get your photo.
And Justin's the only sophomore in the group of that relay team, so you'll have to find
to come to the podium. Russell is from Terricon Industries.
him three more swimmers next year so he can repeat.
Recently, we had a question regarding a classroom at Beverly Hills Elementary School in terms
So they had a winning time of 1 minute 36 seconds for a new school record, and congratulations
of the air quality there regarding the carbon dioxide that was in that in a particular classroom.
to your relay team as well. So that is all I had.
So we had a request by an individual to test that classroom, and we contracted Terricon
Just want to congratulate these folks on a job well done, and again, hopefully we'll
and Russell Herring.
have another state champion come Saturday night in Raleigh, and it's been a great winter,
The senior industrial hygienist is here this evening to kind of go over that report with the Board and to report that out.
and thank you, folks. If you guys will turn around and flow down and shake the school board members' hands,
At the end of the evening, what I will do is I will take this report and post this on
that would be great.
our website for all to see. It'll be listed on the Facilities and Management section on our website, so if the public has any questions, they can directly refer to the reporter or call Dr. Jonathan Bowers, who runs that department. Mr. Herring? Thank you again for being here this evening and for taking some time with your schedule to come and highlight your report to us, to the Board.
Thanks. Just a brief background on the situation here. What we had, had some concerns from a parent regarding a student coming home tired after the school day. Cabarrus County Schools had requested Terricon to come out to monitor for carbon dioxide concentrations in the classroom. We set up a meter in the classroom during a normal school day while the students were there, set it roughly about three, four feet off the ground, normal breathing height for a child sitting at a desk. Let it run all day. We collected at the end of the day, and the meter gave us results, gave us the peak, the lowest, and the average concentrations. Just for some background, the standard that we really, really want to try to stay below is called the IDLH, or the Immediately Dangerous to Life and Health. That's 40,000 parts per million for carbon dioxide. That's the concentration at which we really need to get out of that room. Next down would be OSHA. It's called the PEL, or Permissible Exposure Limit. That is for a normal eight-hour workday. That applies to workers, employees, things like that. There's also another guidance threshold that matches that one as well. There are a number of different standards. They'll usually sit around that 5,000. In the classroom itself, we had an average concentration of about 1,400, 1,414 parts per million. The standard that we referenced in the report was the ASTM standard, which is actually more stringent than that. And if you have any questions, please bear with me. You know, feel free to fire away. I know it gets a little confusing at this point. The ASTM standard is designed for measuring comfort. If you stay within these thresholds, generally, most occupants of that room won't have any complaints regarding the room itself. Enough fresh air helps dilute body odors, things like that. And for that standard, it normally says you want to be no more than 650 over the outside air. Normally, in the Charlotte area, including up here, it runs about 400 to 450 per day. Add the 650, you're looking at about 1050 to 1,100 ppm is where you want to have your threshold. In the classroom, we had about 1,400. So we were a little bit elevated in the classroom based on a more stringent standard based on comfort. Remember, this is just for comfort, help dilute body odors, things like that. This is not a health-based or risk-based threshold. The risk-based ones come in at about the 5,000 or even higher than that. So in our recommendations in the report, we just recommended bringing some fresh air, which is typically the standard response for that, and that should help dilute the air a little bit better, bring down those carbon dioxide concentrations. I know that was a lot... Any questions?
Board members, any questions? Ms. Sandage.
Can you put carbon dioxide in layman's terms for people? What is it? Why is it not healthy? What could it do? All that good stuff.
I will do what I can.
Thank you.
Carbon dioxide is a normal, natural byproduct of human beings, animals, things like that when we breathe. We take in oxygen, we produce carbon dioxide. In a room, that concentration is going to accumulate just because we're in here breathing. That's natural. Typically, to dilute that, you're going to have fresh air brought in by the heating and air system. So the source is just people being in that room. Does that answer your question?
Uh-huh. So I'm sure that there are hundreds of parents that children come home tired every day. Mine come home tired every day. Is that a reason to test every single classroom? And I guess I'm just trying to understand, from a public perspective, I hear that a child came home tired, the parent requested for their classroom to be, you know, looked at. Should every parent be doing that? I hope that made sense, sir.
No, actually, I was trying to prepare for questions that I expected may come up. That's actually a very normal question. We do get asked that periodically. Terricon is not a health professional. I'm not a health professional. I cannot say at 1,400 whether or not a child will get a little tired. Typically, for most of the standards, that's where that 5,000 comes in. People start getting lethargic, maybe some headaches, things like that. This is actually fairly common, unfortunately, in a lot of classrooms, not just here. We do work with a lot of different school districts. We've seen it. The buildings were buttoned up to help save energy, and fresh air was cut out, unfortunately. Do I recommend, based on this, for every classroom to be sampled? I do not.
You answered my question just about the normalcy of it all. I didn't want the alarm to be sounded, is what I'm saying. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Herring, thank you very much for your time and for taking some time out of your schedule to be here this evening. We appreciate it.
Glad to help. Thank you.
And again, as stated, I'll make sure this report is posted on our Facilities section on our website. Just some reminders of the current things taking place in the Cabarrus County Schools this month. The National School Social Work Week is this week. The theme for National School Social Work Week is "We Rise. School Social Workers Rise Up, Supporting Their Students, Families, and School Communities." School social workers rise to share hope. They rise to listen and understand. They rise to challenge inequities. They rise to support all students. Please join me in thanking all of our Cabarrus County School social workers for this amazing job they do to support our students and families. So we thank them. It is also National School Breakfast Week. To remind everyone that last year, our school nutrition team served 1.89 million breakfasts over the course of the year, and a little over 3 million lunches as well, to add that in there. So when we see our nutrition staff this week, I would ask you to reach out and thank them as well. As has been mentioned, the Central Cabarrus Boys Basketball Team will be playing at North Carolina State's Reynolds Coliseum. This weekend, they play Northwood at 7:30, and we look forward to watching them bring home the gold medal for the Cabarrus County School System. If you have not seen them play, I encourage you to go out to the game and watch them play. They are an amazing group of young men that have done a great job. So congratulations to them and Coach Baker as well. There's also Youth Art Month, and as you walked in this evening, you saw some of the great work that is on our walls. I would ask you to take some time to go through the hallways and look at the artwork that is produced here in Cabarrus County. We want to celebrate the visual performing arts throughout the month of March as we observe Youth Art Month and music in our schools. We congratulate all of our students who participate in the arts and the theater and any of those courses that are available here in Cabarrus County Schools, but please take some time to look at the artwork on the walls this evening. And then lastly, we have our upcoming Career Connections Day. Our high school juniors and seniors in Cabarrus County and Kannaples City Schools will have the opportunity to participate in the Cabarrus County Career Connections Day, C4 Day, a career fair and business expo from 8 to noon on March 14th at Cabarrus Arena and Event Center. The Cabarrus Regional Chamber of Commerce is partnering with Cabarrus County Schools, Cabarrus County Educational Foundation, and the Cabarrus County EDC, Cabarrus College of Health Sciences, Kannaples City Schools, Kannaples Education Foundation, North Carolina Works Career Center, and Rowan Cabarrus Community College to host the C4 Day. This year, the event is expanded to two sessions, 8 to noon for Cabarrus County Schools and Kannaples City Schools juniors and seniors, and then 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM for the entire community as a career fair for our area. So I encourage everyone to please attend that and to support all the things that are going on here at the Cabarrus County Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kapicki. Board members, we'll move to 6.03, our Board Attorney comments, and we will ask Mr. Jay White to the podium. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A couple of things that I wanted to bring y'all's attention to in regards to legislative bills that came in. House Bill 219, I think, is very important that y'all need to keep an eye out for. It is seven parts. The most concerning parts that I wanted to bring to your attention tonight is Section 6, which authorizes counties to provide capital funds directly to charter schools. And what that means is as the funds are being needed for a charter school to build, to buy property, to build, to renovate, and to acquire furniture, furnishings, things of that nature, would go directly to the charter schools, which is going to impact y'all significantly because of the capital needs that y'all are having to face over the coming years. So that's something that needs to be brought up to your legislators and start talking to them about it. Also, there's another section, Section 7, which I'm just going to glance, I'm going to go over quickly, and I can talk to y'all more about it at future meetings, but it is allowing for the charter schools to have access to schools' district funds. And what is problematic is that's going to impact federal reimbursement, fees for actual costs, tuition, sales tax refunds, gifts, grants, I mean, the list goes on. One of the things that is concerning, that is my understanding, that I need to confirm with Mrs. Herndon, is the way I'm reading one section of this, or one part of this section, is that when a student enrolls at a charter school, we are having to, we will have to fund, we'll have to transfer monies over. If that student comes back to Cabarrus County Schools, we don't get those money back. So that's problematic, because now we're talking about a per pupil fee. If that student leaves after the second day of our school and comes back on the fourth day of our school, so in other words, that student stays for two days in their charter school, then we lose those funds, which is problematic. So this is a very highly concerning bill that needs to be discussed and needs to be addressed by the county's representatives and let them know how it's going to directly impact. I will tell y'all that none of our local representatives have sponsored that bill. So that is from, you got Gaston Lincoln and Union in Mecklenburg County that has sponsored that bill, just to let you know. I want to also tell you about a really neat bill that, you know, hats off to Representative Baker. She's a primary sponsor. It's House Bill 253. It's called Prevent Students From Harm Act. And in general, what it does, it's amending some of the statutes that's requiring boards, local boards, to implement character education instruction, talking about that's going to be across the board for all grades, and it's going to be standard curriculum, and it's going to, the design is to, for respect of school personnel, responsibility for school safety, service to others, and good citizenship. And there's also a provision about preventing, for local boards having to adopt policies preventing or prohibiting bullying and harassment behavior. You already got a policy to that effect. And that there's a component that consists of consequences and appropriate remedial actions for a person who commits bullying and harassing, which may include instruction on the trait and responsibility of character education and conflict resolution and mediation model. So there seems to be some good things in that bill that can be certainly beneficial. It also talks about training school personnel on child sex abuse and sex trafficking by a nonprofit organization with over 10 years of experience. That's alarming that you'd have to do this, but I will tell you that in my experience, we've got probably one of the best local nonprofit organizations that is already doing this training, and unfortunately, there is a big need for it. But it's in Harrisburg. The organization does a phenomenal job. And then also, health education instruction for kindergarten through ninth grade regarding mental health and emotional health, to include resources, skills, and strategies in regards to suicide prevention. So those are two bills I think it's important for y'all to get an idea, you know, look at. I'll be happy to email you some notes that I have of it, so you can look at it and prepare for y'all's meeting next week with your legislators.
Board members, any questions about either bill?
I was just trying to understand, in every section I read, there was something about, and the charter schools keep 100%. What is that referring to in each one of those sections? Because I want to say I read it in every one.
Well, they did, and that's what I'd like to get with Mrs. Herndon, to confirm exactly what, the way I read it is, again, once the money goes out, we don't get anything back.
That's correct.
That's the way I'm reading it, is that once that child leaves, even if that child comes back, we don't get anything back from them. They get the gravy, they get the cream, and we get the...
For that food here.
But I read that for every single thing that they're getting, not just for the per pupil spending. That's for like the building, capital funds, all of that. So if they don't use that money, they keep 100% of it, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions, Board members? Thank you, Mr. White.
But it's in Harrisburg. The organization does a phenomenal job. And then also, health education instruction for kindergarten through ninth grade regarding mental health and emotional health, to include resources, skills, and strategies in regards to suicide prevention. So those are two bills I think it's important for y'all to get an idea, you know, look at. I'll be happy to email you some notes that I have of it, so you can look at it and prepare for y'all's meeting next week with your legislators.
Board members, any questions about either bill?
I was just trying to understand, in every section I read, there was something about, and the charter schools keep 100%. What is that referring to in each one of those sections? Because I want to say I read it in every one.
Well, they did, and that's what I'd like to get with Mrs. Herndon, to confirm exactly what, the way I read it is, again, once the money goes out, we don't get anything back.
That's correct.
That's the way I'm reading it, is that once that child leaves, even if that child comes back, we don't get anything back from them. They get every, they get the gravy, they get the cream, and we get the...
For that food here.
But I read that for every single thing that they're getting, not just for the per pupil spending. That's for like the building, capital funds, all of that. So if they don't use that money, they keep 100% of it, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions, board members? Thank you, Mr. White. Board members, we'll move to 7.01 in our committee reports. I know Ms. Escobar, you wanted to give us an update on the board's student intern program?
Yeah. So today, the interns, we went to the auxiliary building, and I want to say thank you to Stephanie Allman with School Nutrition. She gave us an overview. And then also to Art Whitaker, who gave us a tour of the facilities, and it was really great. Our interns asked a lot of good questions, and we learned a lot about the logistics of feeding our kids and getting them to school every day. And I'm just so thankful for all the staff who stopped and talked with us as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Escobar. Anybody else have a committee report? Ms. Sandage?
Sure. So the SHAC Committee, Student Health Advisory Committee, I get that wrong a lot. We met once, and we are scheduled to meet again. I just wanted to put a plug in, if I could, about just making sure that our students are healthy, both mentally, physically, and if you see something, say something. And again, it is okay to not be okay. And then for parents, just to know that there is a group of people who are in our community, a group of people who work for our school district, who truly are discussing health and health needs. So that's, those discussions are happening pretty regularly, and it's just good to know that and to make sure our public is aware of that.
Thank you, Ms. Sandage. Anybody else? Ms. Lindsay?
So I'm going to add on to the SHAC meeting too, because Keisha was on there with me, and so was Sam. I've been on this committee for a while, and it's a really great committee. But I did just want to point out one of the really cool things that they did a study on, which was that kids whose parents disapprove of certain behaviors are less likely to do those behaviors. And I know that sounds just very common sense, but it's not. But it truly, the numbers show, the data shows that if, as a parent, you are engaged with these children and you do not agree with certain behaviors and you tell them this, they are listening to you. They are hearing what you're saying. So I hope that that can be something as a community, as parents who are listening to this meeting, your kids are listening to you, they are watching you, and they, if you disapprove of certain behaviors, they are consistently showing, data-wise, that they are not participating in those behaviors.
Thank you very much. I appreciate all the board members, too, for serving on committees as liaisons. It's very important. So we'll move to 7.02, our audit services, RFP results in contract selection with Ms. Carol Herndon. Hello, Ms. Herndon.
Hello. Thank you, board. It's nice to be with you tonight. I am bringing forth to you the results of the RFP that I promised you all I would execute about a year ago, right after I joined Cabarrus County Schools. I asked the board if I could have some grace and do it after I got a year under my belt, and so we started this work at the turn of the year, end of 2023. So this is a summary of the process, next slide. The RFP process, we sent out our request for proposals to five different firms. We received two proposals back in response to that request. They were from Anderson Smith, Anderson White and Smith, who is our incumbent auditor, and then an organization named Forvis, which is actually a combined group of two independent firms that merged and now are operating under a consolidated Forvis name. Next slide. I will mention that between the two of those firms, they currently audit about 77% of the LEAs in the state of North Carolina. So we got a good span of LEAs by looking at the offer that was put on the table from these two firms and feel like they were well-versed with public education, finance, and accounting, and had a good number of clients to reflect that. We had five evaluation criteria. We actually did go back and look at the RFP we did last, which was about five years ago, and we were gonna reevaluate our evaluation criteria, and we did, but we ended up landing on the same five because they seem to be the most important for this work. Staff experience is critically important. While we don't have a lot of upheaval in public education, finance, year over year, the rules and regulations are always changing from a Department of Public Instruction perspective, and particularly our federal programs. So staff experience and continuity is very, very important. Cost, of course, matters. This is a requirement that we get an external audit, but we want to be mindful of the cost. As I referenced previously, we like to look at experience at different LEAs and who they serve within our state. We look at their hourly rates because there is a step up. If you look at the different level of auditors that come and do our audits, and we want to make sure we understand the dynamic between staff rates and partner rates. And then finally, we do think it's important to take a look at experience with our district from a Cabarrus County Schools perspective. I wanted to let you know that I had one of my staff members to actually prepare the initial evaluation, and then our finance leadership team reviewed it, and then we drug Dr. Bish into it, and she was gracious enough to take a look at what we had done because I felt it was super important to have her independent, objective evaluation outside of what we had done from a finance department. So thank you, Dr. Bish. Not many people would want to make their way through a finance RFP, but she was gracious in doing so. We looked at our scoring on the next slide, and these, we did weight the five criteria in a way that we felt was appropriate. And the additional attachment that was posted with this agenda item, you can see a lot of details about each of the five criteria. The score was 334 to 217, so pretty solid, stand out there with regard to Anderson, Smith, and White. And so our recommendation on the final slide is that we approve, or that you approve, a three-year contract with Anderson, Smith, and White, which would be effective for this school year that ends on June 30th, 2023. Any questions?
Any discussion, board members? Mr. Walter?
How long have we had Anderson, Smith, and White as our auditor?
At least five, and I think many more before then. I'd have to look and let you know, I don't know. I should have looked that up. I did not.
Yeah. We went to a school board association that had some meeting several years ago that suggested every five years, you look at a different firm for a different set of eyes and not continually use the same firm every year after year. And you've got that one criteria that you evaluate based on their experience with us. Well, if we haven't had anybody else that are already giving them a leg up over anyone else.
Well, we have had somebody else, just not recently.
If you use that as a criteria. So I don't think we should be using that going forward.
I'm happy to reevaluate it without that.
Didn't seem to make a difference this time, but I would really stress not to use that, otherwise you won't ever get a first set of eyes.
Well, we're happy, we can reevaluate this without that criteria and bring it back next time. That's not a problem at all.
I think the board's, okay, I mean, obviously, the other criteria are important. But if we want to make sure that we're getting an opportunity for first set of eyes, we can't exclude them because obviously, nobody else in the last several years has done any work with us for auditing purposes. So, thank you.
So it's my understanding we'll be bringing this back in April, board members, and we will be asked then to vote and approve on that. Is that right, Ms. Herndon?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move to 8.01, and we'll have Ms. Angie McLean to the podium. She has a presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Dr. Kopecky, and my board family. Tonight, I would like to take an opportunity to shine a spotlight on all of the amazing teacher assistants. Our assistants dedicate so much to themselves to the students and teachers in our county. I started as a teacher assistant bus driver, and I always like to throw this in here, and my story is that there's a few trees that are finally growing back over near Reed's Gold Mine because of my experience as a bus driver. So I tip my hat off to those assistants that are still continuing to drive a school bus. The role of a teacher assistant has evolved over the years. TAs have moved from providing clerical needs from our classrooms to serving in various different roles and covering as classroom teachers, working in small groups, they're supporting as interventionists, they're still driving buses, like me, and they are serving as student check-in, check-out buddies. Our assistants are truly the backbones of our school. We're currently in the process of identifying the next Hendrix Auto Mall Concord Mills Teacher of the Year. And within one of those classroom visits, we observed a total of three teachers in the classroom. One was a toy finalist, and the other were two amazing assistants who were actively working in small groups with students. It was so great to see those best practices and teaching and learning happening in every corner of that classroom. I also had the privilege of attending the Teacher Assistant Representative Meeting hosted by Dr. Kopecky in January. It was such an honor to sit amongst educators who were just as passionate about supporting students, teachers, and our community, and were just as invested in the Destination 2025 Plan for our school district. Our county has also had several assistants who have decided to work towards obtaining their teaching license. I'm excited to announce that our partnership with Western Governors University and UNCC has been finalized for our TA-to-teacher pipeline. There are currently 19 TAs who are enrolled with Western Governors University. There are also other TAs who are completing degrees through other universities as well. It's exciting to know that Cabarrus County Schools continues to provide teacher assistants with the ability to remain in their current roles, assist classroom teachers and students, and still obtain their teaching license. I cannot wait to support them with a teaching position within the best county around. Thank you so much for providing me this opportunity to spotlight our amazing teacher assistants.
Thank you very much. I think we can clap for that.
So I think it's important to note, we've talked a lot about recruitment and retention in the Human Resources Department under Angie's leadership. When you talk about 19 potential TAs moving to become teachers, you know, that is very creative, that's a creative approach to using, getting your own people involved and reaching out to them, getting them involved to become teachers. So Angie, I really commend you for your great work there and very creative, innovative work in terms of reaching out to our own and growing teachers within our own system. So I really appreciate all that good work. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kopecky. It's exciting because we have the best assistants. So what better place to pull our teachers from?
Thank you so much. Board members, we'll move to 8.02, and we will have Mr. Dr. Rusty Parker to the podium for a CTE presentation. Dr. Parker, welcome.
Thank you. I love that doctor piece. This is the first time I get to say it to you.
You stole my thunder. I wanted to point that out.
Oh, you were going to say something.
So I want to congratulate Dr. Parker for achieving his terminal degree and defending his dissertation recently, and he is officially Dr. Rusty Parker. So congratulations, Rusty. Your hard work.
Thank you. I got an email earlier today from Ms. Escobar, and it said, "Dr. Parker." I loved that. You were the first one to send me one that says "Dr. Parker" on it, so thank you. February was CTE month, so I'm thrilled I get to come before you today and kind of show you a few pictures and some things that happened around the district with career and technical education. I like to start out, first of all, by talking about our vision and mission statement. Next, there you go. Our vision and mission statement, we developed it a few years ago, and it's very student-focused. We want to keep it that way. We also have a purpose statement that is student-focused. The vision statement is to inspire students, create futures, and then also to build our community because I feel in our department that we work very hard to develop the whole Cabarrus community, and a big piece of it is what we do at CTE. The mission statement is to build a learning environment where students can pursue their direction and purpose. And then also, the purpose statement is very focused on career and college readiness, and we feel like that's our goal, is to make every student career and college ready. I want to show you some enrollment numbers to start off, and I put up here unduplicated count and duplicated count, so you can see. The unduplicated count is the number of actual CTE students that are enrolled in our programs. But then the duplicated count is those that actually take more than one. So we have several. You can see almost 7,000 that take more than one CTE class. So we have a lot of students in our program. This next slide is a breakdown by middle school and high school, and again, this is the duplicated enrollment because we do have some students in middle school that take more than one CTE class. But you can see at the high school, we've got about 13,500 and then over 7,000 in the middle school piece. One thing I want to talk about is credentials, to kind of share some credential data with you. In 2022, we had over 3,400 credentials achieved, and the reason I put this up here about My Future NC, some of you, I'm sure, have heard about My Future NC, and they have a goal that by 2030, 2 million North Carolinians will have either a high-quality credential or some type of post-secondary degree. So we've tried to align with their focus and also with the focus of the General Assembly and DPI. This year, we are very fortunate that we received funding for all of our credentials that we offer. Up until this year, we received maybe 20% of the funding, and I had to kind of supplement that out of our operating expenses. But this year, we're very fortunate that the General Assembly funded all of our credential allotments this year. And share with you some that are very successful. We have a very strong graphic design program. We have them at Mount Pleasant and Cox Mill, and they always just blow it out. You can see the numbers. They do fantastic with all of their credentials. Also, the drafting programs do very well. They're on the next slide with AutoCAD, Inventor, and Revit. They always do very well. Also, our programs, our trades programs, which is electrical trades, carpentry, and masonry, they all do very, very well. The reason I put this slide also is to show that, to kind of dispel a myth. I think a lot of people think of career and technical education still as the program that students participate in when they don't have a post-secondary plan or they're not going to college. And nothing could be further from the truth. We have students in our programs that have been very, very successful at the college level. I think probably within the past five years, three students that have won the Park Scholarship for NC State came from our career academies in CTE, and I'm very proud of that. You can see all the courses that we offer through articulated credit, current college promise, and then AP courses. We had a really nice program open this fall, so I want to share this. I talked a little bit about aerospace the last time I was up here. But we had an aerospace engineering pathway open at West Cabarrus High School, doing very, very well. They don't have as many students in it yet because it's brand-new, but it is doing very well. And the curriculum that we use, we have a partnership with SREB, which is the Southern Regional Education Board, and they've done very well to support us with equipment. Future programs. A lot of people don't know what data analytics is when I talk about it, so I was going to talk and kind of give you a definition of what data analytics is. You'll hear about data analytics in programs such as health sciences, it can be in hospitality, it can be a lot of different industries. Because looking at data and how you make decisions based on data is what the whole thing's about. Sometimes you'll hear it called data science. I've heard that term a lot, and DPI actually uses that term. But this fall, we will have a data analytics pathway starting as part of the Fintech Academy at Hickory Ridge High School. We're very proud of that. This is one that a lot of people have asked me about, so I want to at least mention it here this evening. We're looking at how to bring a drones program into Cabarrus County Schools. A lot of people think of that as a program that's part of the aviation academy, but I did not put that on the slide on purpose because it can actually be part of multiple programs. At DPI, it's actually part of an agriculture program because with agriculture, you know they spray fields. Even with logistics programs, they fly packages, FedEx and UPS does that. So drones is not technically part of the aviation pathway, so we're looking at kind of where to place that and what to do with that. And then one that has come up several times is veterinary assisting. We're looking at in the fall of '24 is having a vet assisting program at Northwest Cabarrus. They have a very, very strong agriculture program at Northwest. And the vet assisting program is really not a full program. It's actually one course. So it will be the tack-ons, top-level, senior-level class for the animal sciences and equine science pathway, so we're going to add that as a senior course. Career development's a big thing in CTE. Last February, Catherine Truitt spoke at the State Career and Technical Education Directors Conference, and one of the comments that she made was career planning is for all students. And I love that she addressed it as all students, not just CTE students, but all students. So in Cabarrus County Schools, we have something called the Career Continuum, and we promote that as career-focused activities from grades kindergarten all the way through the 12th grade. And so that's what it's focused on. Some CTE month activities. We do what's called a Rise-Up Day, where we try to bring some of our middle school students up to the high school. And the pictures that you see here are Winkler students that came up to West Cabarrus. So these students were actually getting to play around a little bit in our carpentry program. So they were trying to learn how to hammer a nail. That kid's doing pretty good in that picture. He'll be doing better than I would do. But they get to play around with some of the basic tools and learn what carpentry was all about. I think the next one is a... grade, and so that's what it's focused on. Some CTE Month activities. We do what's called a Rise-Up Day, where we try to bring some of our middle school students up to the high school, and the pictures that you see here are Winkler students that came up to West Cabarrus. So these students were actually getting to play around a little bit in our carpentry program, so they were trying to learn how to hammer nail. That kid's doing pretty good in that picture. He'll be doing better than I would do. But they get to play around with some of the basic tools and learn what carpentry was all about. I think the next one is aviation. This one's always a hit. Kids feel like they're playing a video game, so this is one of our flight simulators that they got to use. Actually, this is the forklift simulator. I'm sorry, this is the forklift. So we have a forklift simulator at West Cabarrus, and we have several, at least ten, flight simulators, but they got to play around with a lot of those that day and learn what it feels like to kind of drive a forklift or fly a plane. And I thought this one was amazing. I didn't get to see this, but I saw that they sent me the pictures. Is we had some students that were learning about logistics programs. Some of them didn't know what a hand truck was, and so they got to put a stack of paper on a hand truck and learn how to push a hand truck. So that was their goal for today, to race pushing a hand truck out at West Cabarrus. Dr. Kopecky's already mentioned this, but I'm glad that he did, and we are very proud that we partner with the Cabarrus Arena and Event Center for the Career Connections Day, and it is this coming Tuesday, and everybody is invited. The student event is from eight to 12, and then there is an adult event from five to seven. So it is that it's designed for students that do not have a post-secondary plan. We did that intentionally, because we will have, we'll have 11th graders and 12th graders that don't have a plan, and that's our goal, is to help them. And I will end with this by saying how much I appreciate all of you as board members that support career and technical education. I love seeing you when we have an event, so we appreciate very much in CTE the support you all give us. And I'll take any questions.
Any questions? Ms. Sandage?
Hey, I've got two questions. Thanks, Rusty. I always appreciate this presentation. So do you know how many EC students or special education students we have in CTE?
I don't have the exact number off the top of my head as far as how many they are. We do have, in CTE, we're required to have a process to support special population students. And recently, our special populations coordinator moved to the beach, so our position is open. But yes, we do focus very much on EC students and all special pops kids. I just don't have the number off the top of my head right now.
Yeah, and just an opportunity to highlight what you're doing over there and how this, like, comes into fruition for a student who's getting ready to graduate, who may not have that plan. So you said it's for every kid, K through 12. So if I've got a kindergarten that maybe a parent understands that they may like this right now, how does that go from K through 12 to an actual job?
That's a good question. We, our Career Continuum is focused on all grade levels, and we've tried to be very specific about the grade and the activities that they do. It's funny, Sarah and I were talking earlier today, I'll put her on the spot. We were talking earlier today about how to do that very thing. What can we do? Because now CTE federal funding allows us to support as low as fifth grade, so we do have the opportunity to help with career awareness initiatives. Excuse me, we were talking earlier today, what does that look like? Because we've never done that before. Usually, CTE's always been middle school, high school, so it's really new ground for us with what does elementary look like. But we do, as part of that Career Continuum, have a middle school piece that's very strong. It's all about exploration, so a big piece of it is looking at how do they discover who they are. It's all about career interest inventories, that type of thing. And then high school, by then, they're supposed to have a resume done. They're supposed to know their pathway and be moving forward to post-secondary, so that's kind of the way it looks.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Walter?
Thank you, Dr. Parker.
Yes, sir.
Always enjoy your presentation.
Thank you.
I took a look at last year's presentation.
What's that?
Last year's presentation.
Yes.
And last year, you had the duplicated count at twenty thousand, seven forty. Now, I think, why the drop?
We dropped a little bit, and I do not know the answer to that. The only thing I know is we've had some changes with some of our academies. Our numbers were down a little in some areas, but I really don't have a pinpoint as to why it dropped, but it did drop some. We did have it go down.
Yeah, if we can look into that and see.
And we've added more programs, which is why I can't figure that out.
Also, in that presentation last year, you talked about Naviance and Junior Achievement. Are we still doing this program?
We still do Naviance. We use Junior Achievement as part of individual programs. We don't have, last year, we used them as part of the Career Day, when we didn't have the Career Connections Day through COVID, and we did that. That's when we partnered with them. But now that we're back full blast with the Career Connections Day, we're not as focused on their event as we are on our own event.
Okay. And my last question, can you talk a little more about business partnerships and how businesses can get involved?
Thank you for saying that. We are working to build business partnerships more and more. One of the things that we have done recently, and I didn't put it in the slide because it's not solidified yet, we are working with a company called Salesforce. I think most of you, if you work in industry, you know what Salesforce is all about. They have an educational arm, that they support education entities to provide work-based learning opportunities. They help you manage a database of contacts, and so we're working with them right now to develop a partnership. The goal is to more effectively manage our partnerships, because right now, if I had to show you them, they're on a spreadsheet, and it's not real pretty. So our goal is to work with Salesforce to be able to communicate with them better and kind of treat them as our customer. I mean, that's really what that's for, and so that when we work with them, we have a lot better, a cleaner process for how to communicate with a business partner. So that's our goal for right now.
Ms. Escobar?
Dr. Parker?
Yes, ma'am.
The question I put in the email was, what is your goal for the future as far as number of students?
To grow in CTE. That is a double-edged sword question there, because we want them to grow, and we want it to, we want to increase our numbers in CTE, but right now, I'm having trouble filling all of the programs that we have, so the demand is so high, and that's very fortunate. We're very fortunate. We have a lot of students that are interested in CTE. So to pinpoint an exact number, I would probably struggle with that. I want that number to go up, because he noticed it did go down. But we really are fortunate that a lot of students want to take CTE programs, and we're trying to provide programs like aviation and electrical trades like your child and those types of things, because then that's what students want, and so we're fortunate that we have a lot of them that want to take our programs.
And this popped in my head when you were giving the presentation, so I'm sorry, I'm not giving you a heads-up on this, but the drone, could it also be used in construction? Because I'm just thinking, we keep on getting presentations with the school buildings, and we see the drone images from that as well.
Well, I'm fortunate that Brian Cone, he's in the room. I know I'm going to put him on the spot. He's the one who looked at me. He's been great to come out to West Cabarrus and show the drones that he has to our students, and so we've had a really good partnership with Construction Department. We've been real fortunate that we work well with them. So yeah, that is, that is something we do, yeah.
Any other questions? Ms. Sandage?
I'm sorry, Rusty. So did the universe align, and you got money from, like, fully funded? Does that happen often? Will you need to do something next year? How does, like, how does that work?
It is a continuous fund stream. The, up until, I'd say up until '22, every school district in North Carolina had to supplement to pay for credentials. There was not a fund and enough money to fund them all. Like, to fund our district, we figured it out a couple of years ago. It was about $250,000. Well, that's a major chunk of my budget to try to do that. So this year, the General Assembly, and I think the North Carolina Association of Career and Technical Education, they lobbied the General Assembly very effectively, and we appreciate that, because now this year, they funded it all. And so, and we were up to about $300,000 this year, and so that's about how much we got to take care of it. So we're very thankful for that.
Ms. Lindsay?
Just one question, and where does the robotics fall into with the CTE? Like, are you guys connected, or is that separate? How does that work?
That's a good question, too. It's kind of split. We received a grant a few years ago to provide robotics clubs at every school, and that's really where the clubs come from. So if you go to a school in a district, pretty much any elementary, middle, high, they have a robotics club, and that's kind of how it's run that way. But in CTE, we have it as a course. We probably, oh, it's at least eight years ago. Excuse me. We developed a robotics one and two curriculum, so there's two courses that we teach through CTE. Several other school districts around us have kind of partnered and came on with it, and we use it. We manage it locally out of Cabarrus County Schools. I am the state rep for that program. But other school districts, Rowan offers it, I think, now Union picked it up, and they're doing it, and we do it as a CTE course now. So it's kind of two ways. There's a club, and there's also a class. And the class is actually at, Jim Robinson has a robotics program that's a course, Central and Northwest, they all have robotics classes.
So are those the same groups that are participating in these state championships that are happening from the last couple of weekends? Like, or do you have to be in the club itself, or do the class members create their own teams, too?
At the three schools that have a robotics class, they're also part of the club. So they, it's kind of merged when it comes to the competition. So every school is available to go to competitions, and that's handled through that grant and that whole process. And then, but a lot of the teachers that teach our robotics classes are also the advisors for the robotics club, so it's kind of merged.
So do they get funding that way, too?
I fund the curriculum, and then I'm not sure now with the grant, how the other piece is funded. I just run the course piece, and I don't run the grant piece.
Okay, thank you.
Hope that answered your question. Yeah, it's split.
Yeah, no, it's confusing, but I mean, I, yeah, I just wondered about the funding piece of it, if they were going to get some of the funding, too, from that.
Yeah, and we have to really make sure that what we fund is for curriculum purposes out of CTE. I'm not allowed to fund grant information. I mean, grant, equipment, and things like that, it has to be for CTE teaching purposes. And so we've had to be really, very careful about how that looks to make sure we follow federal guidelines.
Okay.
So I think Mrs. Reeves can kind of clarify some of that, too, as well.
Absolutely. So for our VEX teams, which you may have seen, they have recently had two very big competitions. The other thing is that we also sponsor coaches to be able to participate in that, and we use local dollars to be able to support with the VEX teams, their registration. I work very closely with Mr. Perizzi in terms of making sure that they have the resources they need to be able to sustain that extracurricular, specifically at the schools where we have interest in VEX. I will say you're going to be hearing more information about some amazing summer programming that involves VEX in the next couple of months.
And right now, thirty out of thirty-eight traditional schools have VEX teams, and we currently have five hundred and six total students involved in the VEX, the VEX Robotics.
Any questions?
Anything else? Mr. Tredaway?
I just, not really a question, but one of the things that I find most refreshing is that we can remember the time where students were tracked. And I know it's important to have pathways, but I just like the fact that we're blurring that, we're not asking students to pigeonhole themselves now, and that we're asking them to explore, and I just think that's so refreshing. I know for so long, we were asking students to make decisions that were probably not age-appropriate for, you know, the rest of their life, or their careers, anyway. And I just like the fact that all these technical skills are coming into CTE, and I'm looking forward to AI not being necessarily something that our English teachers are dreading, but that our students are looking forward to participating in, and things like that. So I just applaud that.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Okay, board members, with that, we're going to move to nine point zero one. Our guest speakers address the board. I'll read a statement about the procedures that we follow in regard to public comment. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to speak, and an individual speaking for a group may be allowed up to five minutes at the discretion of the board chair to express interests and concerns related to the official business of the board and school district. The speakers will be called in the order in which we receive their request. A person may not be substituted for a speaker, nor may one speaker donate time to another speaker. If a speaker runs out of time, then the speaker may leave the additional information with the board clerk. Statements reasonably perceived to be disruptive or imminently threatening to the orderly operation of the meeting shall not be permitted. Any limitation on public comments shall be viewpoint neutral. The board chair has the authority to rule the speaker out of order. If a speaker or attendee willfully interrupts, disrupts, disturbs this meeting, and refuses to leave after being asked by the board chair, then the speaker may be escorted out and could be arrested for trespassing or disrupting an official meeting. So we're going to start with our first speaker, and that is Mr. Paul Wanish. Mr. Wanish?
Good evening, Mr. Wanish.
I'm back. I'm back. So this is going to be more technology, and I'll try and tell you about the VEX program, the clubs, from a grandparent's point of view, looking at it. My perception was, VEX was about building robots, and I remember seeing the robot battles, I think they were called, and there were two robots that went against each other, and they used saws and bashed the other up. So I'm thinking that's the way it started. VEX is not that at all, okay? And it's important that you all understand that. A quote from a mother that was in the world competition, she's had three sons there, and they went through VEX. And what she said was, and this is eight years of it, that the kids develop, develop code, design and build the robots, work together as a cohesive team, they recognize areas of excellence in their teammates, they try and try again, they use an iterative approach to design things, and then they document everything, like an engineer would document it in a technical notebook. And my background is engineering, I have a dozen patents, so I've gone through this whole thing. It is very close to that. The way they run competitions is amazing and well worth seeing. The whole competition, one minute. Two drivers, they have to switch at thirty seconds. So there's coordination, there's teamwork, there's finding the best drivers. They actually do teams, team competitions. So I just wanted to get to the notion that VEX is, to me, a personal development technique using high-tech, high-tech tools, okay? It really is a lot different than just building robots, and please think of that. A grandson that's both in AIG and in VEX, they're almost the same. The intent is to give the kids in VEX the drive to build these robots themselves. So they are not instructed on how to build a robot. They're asked the question, well, is that the best power system? Are you going to be able to get all the points you want? So that's what VEX is about, and that's what AIG training is. It's letting a student discover for themselves and solve problems that way. So let me flip the page that I gave you, and to me, I always like to come in with an ask. What is useful and that I can contribute here? Got to elevate the recognition of VEX in these schools. The people that help do these, run these classes, there's one person there to, twenty seconds, there's one person there that's there to guide the students, okay? For the whole year and for competition events, they get $500. That's about $3 an hour. They would like to have teachers come and volunteer to do this. They can't get teachers. They've got some volunteers there. Those people cannot communicate with their students. And what I'd like to see is have better compensation for them, to make it more attractive for teachers, and limit the size of the teams per coach. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wanish.
No questions. Good.
Okay, we'll go to speaker number two, is Katherine Crawford. Welcome, Ms. Crawford.
Hi. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to y'all. All across the nation, the practice of fundraising through auctioning off puppies and kittens and living beings has gained momentum. This is really concerning for me and for a lot of my rescue associates. I have been a rescue affiliate now for a couple of decades. I now volunteer my services mediating pets back to parents. Regarding the puppy auction, the position of the AKC and AKC sanctioned clubs is that breeders not allow their puppies to be prizes in a raffle or auction, or sold to pet stores or commercial pet dealers. This is a big deal to the AKC. It's also a big deal to breed-specific clubs. In order to attain and maintain good standing with the AKC, breeders are supposed to vet the people they buy, they sell the puppies to. They're supposed to ensure that they understand the breed and the complications of each breed, and that they can provide what that breed needs. Determining suitability for a home is not possible in a public auction. And, you know, it's also, on a side note, puppies are not supposed to be weaned until eight weeks, and they're not sold until ten to twelve weeks, according to the AKC and other clubs. Also of concern is that this practice gives our students the concept, the impression that all you have to do is be able to pay the money to get the dog. There's nothing else that is required. It teaches them that life is cheap and impulse buys are appropriate. I would like to thank Dr. Poole at Hickory Ridge High School because he was amazing to work with, he was receptive, and he took into consideration everything that I said during our conversations. I appreciate that, and I hope that our experience with him in the future will be good also. Determining the suitability of a home is not possible through public auction, it just is not. It's not good for the dogs, it's also not good for the schools themselves if they're participating. Let's look at the possibility of how we're actually going to tell somebody, that one of the commentaries was that, we'll make sure he goes to a good home. Well, how do you do that? You can't take someone who drove 150 miles to do, to come to this auction and bid on it and say, you can't bid on this dog. And then you can't say, you're not a suitable household, so you can't bid on, you can't take possession of this dog. The legal liability is tremendous for the school. So this is just the tip of the iceberg regarding this problem. Consequently, due to the complications which can arise for the Cabarrus County school system and for the schools themselves, should these auctions be allowed to continue, we ask that y'all ban the auction of live animals from fundraising efforts entirely. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crawford. Our third and final presenter is Darren Bauer. Mr. Bauer?
I won't turn it over to him, I don't want to arrest or kick him.
Hello, Mr. Bauer.
Hi. Now, there, whenever the timer is ready, I can go. Definitely God is, God is around us, because ever since we walked in here today, Ms. Natalie at the desk, she was saying that her child was in a VEX program, and that there were missing parts, that they didn't have enough to build another bot, and that's why I'm coming here tonight to talk about is funding and the backing from the board. We had students up here that, I mean, great athletes, but we also have another state champion. Fourth grade and won the Alliance Challenge. I lettered in baseball and football. I was told what plays to run, what the batting order was, but in VEX, everything is handled by the students. It's a students-centered ethos, where they give them the game, they give them the notebook, and they said, here, build a bot that will take care of these tasks. And that's one, what this thing does, and I've seen these things in action, I've actually judged competitions, and the first time that I went and I judged one, I was like, I have no idea. But I was paired up with a student, I believe his name was Josh Junior, in the VEX program, has been in there a few years, he's already had everything planned out. He's going to NC State, mechatronics, robotics, 4.0, unweighted GPA, so he's all set. He's going to Worlds, Dallas, Texas, not many fourth graders can say that. And so you go through these engineering notebooks, you look at them, you grade them, you take the top six, you go and interview. Every team gets an interview. And so they're learning all these life skills, interviewing, a panel of adults going in front of these students. Tell us about your robot. What are your favorite parts of the robot? Engaging each one of the members and every single team, whether they're in it for like the engineer, the excellence award, or judges award, or design award, every team still gets interviewed, so they still get reps in the interviewing process. It's impressive, and I've seen progression throughout this, throughout this season, you know, just seeing them getting better, and seeing their bots grow, and getting better, more points. Football, baseball, you're always competing against the other team, but in the Alliance competitions, you're thrown together with, with another team that you've never paired with, and you work out a strategy pretty much on the fly. These are life skills. We get thrown together with people that we don't necessarily will hang out with outside of work, but they get thrown together and they work as a common team right there on the spot. And so that's why I'm asking the CTE program to fund VEX, we're looking for sponsors. So just, it's amazing what these kids are doing.
Darren, if I may, I hate to make assumptions, but that's your son?
Yes.
And your son's name?
Eric.
His name is Eric?
No, Jackson.
Jackson?
No, go ahead, talk about, if you'll allow him, like, what's VEX to you?
VEX means a lot to me because you can pair with teams, and you can do a lot of stuff with your robot, and you progress throughout the season, and you just learn a lot of life skills and learn to communicate with other people, and that's what you don't learn with sports.
Well, you've learned that in sports. No, I've seen, ever since, ever since COVID and everything, he was a different Jackson. But I really think VEX has brought him back.
Awesome. Jackson, I just want to say to you, I've been very fortunate to go out to see some of the competition at the elementary, middle, and high school levels. I'm very impressed and very proud of what I, what I see in terms of our students and the things that you're doing. I can confidently say this to you, Jackson, I want to look you dead in the eye when I say this to you, you are way smarter than me when it comes to that robotics and that engineering piece. And I'm really proud and impressed with the work that you're doing. I would encourage you to continue to do it and stay in it for the long run, because as your dad just said, it's going to teach you a lot of skill sets that whether you know it or not now, and I believe you do realize that you're going to carry over those skill sets into your career, whatever you choose to do once you leave high school, and it's going to continue to serve you well. And possibly scholarship opportunities, because they do exist for robotics, and there are a lot of opportunities in colleges. And I know there are many great colleges in the state of North Carolina, but North Carolina State itself has a great, has a great engineering program and other programs that you can transfer over with the skill sets you're learning now. So I'm very, very proud of you. I also admire your courage to come here and speak tonight in front of the board, and tell us a little bit about it. So thank you for representing yourself, your school, and, and the robotics program so well. I really appreciate that, it means a lot to me, so thank you. And congratulations, because you're a state champion, that means as much to me as, as anybody else that walked in here tonight. And I apologize to you that we didn't have you up here, recognize you with the other state champions, but congratulations to you, because that's awesome, I appreciate that. Thank you.
And there's still an opportunity this weekend for the middle school competition, that is at Hickory Ridge Middle School, and I'll be judging that competition. My wife, she'll be doing the hospitality.
So we have a few other board members that'd like to speak. Ms. Sandich?
So Dad, kudos for advocating for your baby, I truly appreciate that. And I would ask if he could come up here and shake our hands like all the other. That's a huge accomplishment.
And thank you to Ms. Dolan, Ms. Millby, and Ms. Highsmith, who helped make this possible. Thank you.
Ms. Lindsay?
So, real quick, I just wanted to add to that, that Pam and I had the pleasure of getting to see Jackson win that championship and go to Dallas, so we are so excited for you, we're going to be cheering for you from here, okay? Thank you.
Okay, board members, we're going to move to 10.0, our action agenda. The first one is 10.01, our school boundary realignment study and long-range plan contract. Mr. Louder?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, board members. It's my pleasure to come to you tonight to present to you the contract for the school boundary realignment study and long-range plan. Also, we have joining virtually tonight, Mr. Justin Rich from Cooperative Strategies, so he'll be able to answer any questions you may have concerning their portion of the contract, and I'll try to answer anything from our standpoint of our things. But on Monday, March 13th, the school board did approve the Cooperative Strategies as a consultant for the 2024 school boundary realignment study and long-range plan. With that approval, staff has worked over the last four weeks and put together our final scope and fee, and that's what we'll bring back to you tonight. So at the end of this presentation, we request that you approve the contract with Cooperative Strategies in the amount of $288,000, and see attached the standard agreement we have, and also Exhibit A, which is a pretty detailed scope of work and what their duties are to be. And with that, I'll open up to questions, and myself. Mr. Justin, are you online?
I sure am.
There you go. Okay, I knew he was back there somewhere. All right.
Okay, board members, any discussion, any questions about the contract? Ms. Escobar?
So, thank you so much. We had the opportunity to talk earlier, so I just wanted to say thank you for the work and for going back and, and working with them. I do think that this is the best choice of the choices that we had. I just wanted you to share how confident you feel about the relationship, even just going through this process, because you've gotten to interact with them more than we have.
I feel very good about it. We've had quite a few discussions with the whole team at Cooperative Strategies. Mr. Rich was also in most of those meetings as well, and he can speak to that as well, but we, we back and forth with our GIS folks here and our team, and we feel very, very good about what we ask them to do, and what we ask them to maybe tweak in the overall scope of the project, and they were very, very open to that, and worked with us very, very well to make sure that, we discussed what each item was, that we felt really confident in what we were getting for what we were asking for in different stages, which is very, very important throughout the contract.
And to the voice of God who's listening, thank you so much for being here, and I just wanted to say thank you for working with us and understanding how important it is to us that our community understand the process, and that you're willing to have all of these meetings. It'll be later on in the, in this process, but I just really appreciate that you understand that we want to hear from the community, and having those community engagement meetings, the number of them that we're going to have, I just really appreciate that. Thank you.
Great, thank you. We're excited, and I think in our collaboration with staff and kind of ironing out what this scope of work is, that, that we commit to, that just the wealth of data and the thought that has gone into this already, we're just confident that, working with the district, we've got good partners, and we're excited to be able to make a positive impact on those planning decisions, and a crucial component to your point is getting the community involved and understanding their perspective, so thank you.
And I'll add there, I think that Cooperative Strategies, I think I have a pretty good impression of us as Cabarrus County, is the amount of data that we actually have to be able to submit to the process. So actually, a lot of the upfront tasks that were in the scope were able to be minimized due to the fact that we have so much data, we can just pass on in the format that they can use it.
I would just second that, yes.
Ms. Sandich?
I just wanted to echo Pam and just talk about the importance of community involvement in every step of the way, making sure they are knowledgeable. Some of our community may not understand the numbers, they may not understand the details in, you know, black and white, but just making sure we are very strategic and purposeful about making sure our community understands what's happening. And I say that because I listened to Dr. Kapiki as he explained this process upcoming to the Logan community. We just have people in our community that don't understand everything, and we've got to keep that in mind and make sure those folks are a part of this discussion.
Absolutely. We have stressed very much with the consultants with Cooperative Strategies that it's going to be very much a data-driven process, so we have all the data that supports everything, and I understand that data and why it's so important to understand where we have schools with empty seats, where we don't have schools, where people are closer, in their district boundaries, closest to the school that they hopefully can go to. Sometimes maybe they're not quite the closest, but they might be as far as the way transportation happens to get them there, that would still be the same process. And so that's very, very important to understand, that when you go through this process, that we are trying to make sure that the whole system as a whole is improved, and everybody has an opportunity to go to one of our great schools, no matter where they are signed.
Right, and just as early as possible to get the community involved. I know the timeline I looked at was like way off, but just making sure we include them the minute we can. Thank you.
Mr. Tredaway?
I just wanted, I appreciate the detailed timeline that's been presented, and just, I guess, serve as a reminder to everyone that our hard date is February of 2024, and that has to be a hard date. For parents, for system, for, I mean, there's just so much that has to result from those decisions. And I'm looking at my colleagues here, because we can be part of that problem in delay if we're not careful. And so I just feel like we just need to be cognizant that this timeline needs to be not etched in chocolate, but written in stone.
Mr. Walter?
Yeah, I don't exactly see where you got February, but it looks to me like community meetings start in November, with a recommendation in December, is that correct, or is that not correct?
Actually, we will have presentations going in September, in August, September, and October, presentations will begin. Once we have finalized some of the alignment maps, we'll obviously have, most of your forums going to take place probably in October and early November timeframe, so that we get input back, so those can be tweaked, and those boundaries then brought back to you for presentation, so that you will have a couple of months for public hearings and to make the decisions, so we don't miss our deadline on the 20.
We were discussing, we were just discussing community meetings, not internal meetings, or does the internal meetings?
Internal meetings.
Are they supposed to include the community?
There will be some members of the community, I think, assigned, Dr. Kapiki, you may as a group, assign members to that steering committee, if you will, as we give in the process.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we have enough time before, you know, you just don't have a community meeting next month, you're making the recommendations to the board. That's done well ahead of time.
Basically, that form.
To get that input. So that timeline might, might look to be tweaked, or at least I think it should be tweaked a little bit, but better convey what we want them to do, but overall, it looks good.
Ms. Lindsay?
So I was just going to add to that, Keisha and I were, when we were meeting, had our meeting together, and we both agreed that definitely want to make sure that we can have these community meetings ASAP to go ahead and get started, and making sure that everybody's voice is heard. I think that that's been so crucial with these realignment processes, is making sure that everybody feels like they're able to, to be heard in that process. And so I just wanted to reiterate that as well, from, from her statement.
Mr. Rich can jump in here if he wants, but the first four months is going to be really heavy data-driven. We're taking all of the data, trying to analyze where the students are, whether they attend in district, out of district. Right now, 10% of our students attend outside the district they live in, or the boundary they live in, for different reasons, whether it's CTE or whatever, they might be going special program systems. But we also have to do all that and then churn the GIS data that comes along with that, determine the yield, the students. We'll be doing a very comprehensive analysis this time of what type of subdivisions, or housing, or apartments, that sort of thing, what the yield from those are historically, so that we can apply those to the future, so that we can make a better projection that futures, before we start setting boundaries and discussing why boundaries are going where they are, that's when the community is going to get involved at that point, once the data is there to say, here's the data, how do we solve this problem?
Mr. Farr?
Yes, this is going to be probably maybe the biggest redistricting that we've ever done in this county, so it's obviously going to be very important that we do what we're supposed to do, and, and we, and I'm, you know, Sam and I was on the same call earlier, and, and we both agreed that this has got to be, the board cannot kick the can down the road. Once we make a decision, we need to have guts enough to stand by it and not let the public come down here and intimidate or influence what the right decision is. So that is a major, you know, what he said to me is very important, we have to stand by those dates.
If I could add, Mr. Rich, would you like to add in there, I know we had a discussion about how your firm gets the public involved and then gets them involved in that process.
Yeah, and I do want to just reiterate that while we may not be having community meetings until November where we're sharing potential boundary scenarios and things like that, I think we have to be thoughtful and methodical about, we're, we're brand new to your district, and we don't want to come in and be recommending or suggesting things that, without doing the work, and as is talked about, given the nature of the growth in your district, and all of those other relevant factors, we're looking at doing enrollment projections, we're looking at doing a housing study, going back and making sure that you have adequate facilities, and those are planned for in the future. Before we talk about boundaries, so that we're not backtracking or, you know, making, making decisions, or even suggesting decisions that are perhaps half-baked. So I think as long as we do our due diligence first, and I do think that that includes community involvement, we're going to be making, at least every other month, we'll be in front of you all, providing you with updates, and that, that will be one aspect of this, but I also think that there will be other ways to engage with the community, whether that's through, through the website and having information as that's completed as part of the district's website, or a link to a site that we maintain for the district. And I think when we can work out some of those logistics, and we have information to share that's relevant, that contributes to this transparent process, that's, that's what we're committed to.
Anything else, board members? Okay, y'all ready to take a vote? Okay, board, I Okay. Board, I need a motion to approve the contract with Cooperative Strategies LLC in the amount of $288,000 as presented. Ms. Lindsay?
Samu.
I need a second. Mr. Tredaway?
Second.
So I have a motion by Ms. Lindsay, a second by Mr. Tredaway. All of those who are in favor of approving the contract with Cooperative Strategies in the amount of $288,000 as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
The contract is approved. Thank you, board members, and thank you, Mr. Lauter and your team, and everybody at Cooperative Strategies for the amount of time you've already invested in this.
I'd like to thank Mr. Rich for hanging out in the cloud to join us here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We are all looking forward to this, so thank you.
Just real quick, I want to recognize two cabinet members that were heavily involved in this. Number one, first and foremost, is Carol Herndon, who had the foresight to appropriately budget the monies for this and to get it right. I know we came under budget, but I mean, it was, it was very important that we budget that money appropriately, and her leadership certainly proved helpful in this particular area. And also Dr. Bowers, as we continue to negotiate the contract, he saw some things that were on that contract that we thought we could do a little better with, and did a really good job working with Cooperative Strategies to get us to where we are. So to Carol Herndon and to Dr. Bowers, I appreciate your leadership and all your involvement in this, so thank you. And Brian and Tim, obviously, as well. You don't get thanked nearly enough for the work you do, so thank you for that.
Thank you. We'll move to 10.02, J.M. Robinson High School Mondo Track Contract Approval.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Kapicki. As a part of our continued partnership with Cabarrus County, Cabarrus County Schools and the Cabarrus Visitors' Bureau, otherwise known as the CVB, we are presenting before you tonight the contract for the new Mondo Track project located at J.M. Robinson High School. This project had been approved previously by the CVB Board of Directors, the Cabarrus County Commissioners, and was presented to this board at the February 13th Board of Education meeting as approved. Funding for this project is important. It is being totally funded in its entirety by the CVB. No funding from Cabarrus County, it's all coming from CVB. We will just manage this project through the district as a capital project, as we do with others. With the approval of this contract, the Board of Education, with the approval of this contract by the Board of Education, GeoSurfaces will begin work the first week of April and have the project completed by August the 5th, in time for the next school year. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions? Hearing none, then.
One question. Ms. Escobar?
Thank you. So for that season, where will the, do we know where the kids are going to go, Ron?
They'll, they'll be able to run on the track.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we're not going to start until, it's not going to impact the track in the, at the current school, for the current, current track season, I should say.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Mr. Walter?
So for $1.5 million, you're confident this company can do this work?
Yes, sir. So GeoSurfaces, we've worked with them on numerous other projects, and they are the authorized representative of Mondo Surfacing.
Okay. But it is the CVB's paying, paying for it, but it's.
That is correct.
Thanks.
Any other questions, discussion? Okay, we will take a vote. I need a motion to approve the contract for the new Mondo Track project in J.M. Robinson High School. Ms. Lindsay?
I'll make the motion to approve the contract.
Need a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Farr, a motion by Ms. Lindsay. All those in favor of approving the Mondo Track contract, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, board members, we'll move to 10.03, Budget Amendment Number 005. It's getting late. Summary of Change and Fund, and have Ms. Carol Herndon. Thank you, Ms. Herndon.
Yeah, absolutely. Hello again, board. I am happy to bring to you Budget Amendment Number Five. We're getting late in our fiscal year, and we are now managing a total budget of right at $480 million. We don't have a lot of changes to discuss for Budget Amendment Five, but I want to highlight those that I think are most meaningful. If we could move to the other PDF. Yeah, thank you so much. So we have total changes of right at $4.24 million. Most of that comes from our state and capital outlay funds. The other changes are fairly small, and you can see the information regarding those changes in your packet. We'll slip over to the Word document. Thank you very much. And from a state fund perspective, you might recall when I presented Budget Amendment 004, that there were some transfers pending at the Department of Public Instruction that I thought would have some additional allotments coming into our district from the state. And you can see that that materialized almost to the level of $1.9 million. In addition, from a state funding perspective, we had two additional allotments. One was related to our digital learning grant, and the other to our early grade reading proficiency. So always glad to get additional allotments from our state. So the state increases were about $1.9 million. And then the other large item with regard to this budget amendment relates to capital outlay, and we received our allotment from the Department of Public Instruction, which we get every year, which funds our bus lease for our bus fleet. So that's pretty much it for Budget Amendment 005. We do have some expected additional allotments between now and the end of June related to transportation, federal EC funds, and some other small adjustments along the way. So we'll keep bringing them as we get them, but we are busy analyzing and making transfers as necessary and making sure that we spend our budget on this year's students in the way that we designed. Any questions?
Any questions, board members? Okay, hearing none. I need a motion to approve the Budget Amendment Number Five, Summary of Change and Fund. Ms. Lindsay?
Make a motion to approve Budget Number Five.
Need a second?
Second.
Mr. Walter? We have a motion by Ms. Lindsay, a second by Mr. Walter. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move to 10.04, Our Policies for Approval on Second Read, and we'll have Dr. Sandy Ward. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. Well, good evening, board members, Madam Chair, Dr. Kapicki, and Mrs. McLean. We have several policies up for second read. There were no policies up for first read, and I haven't received any questions. I'm not sure if questions were posed to Ms. Burns before she left. Does anyone have any questions on our policies?
Any questions? I don't think so.
Okay. And I'll appear for the next one.
So are you going to go through each of the, can you tell us what the policies are?
Sure.
Just read them to us.
Absolutely. So we have Policy 4220, which is the Student Insurance Program. And this just clarifies that students and parents are responsible for paying premiums. And we added a section about catastrophic insurance to address the new statutory requirement. And then there were some legal references that were recommended there. Alternatively, the board may choose to pay for or some amount of the accident insurance premiums on behalf of the students. And the second note is state law now requires the board to purchase catastrophic insurance for high school interscholastic athletic activities. Any questions? All right. Next one is 4240 and 7312, Child Abuse and Related Threats to Child Safety. Here, we just had a revisment to the language there, a very short clarification, and then we did have some legal references that were included. Any questions there? Next, we have 6507 and 7403, Physical Standards Testing for Bus Drivers, and we were recommending to rescind this policy because the NCDOT, our federal statutes really govern that right now, and we don't need to have the bus drivers doing two different tests. Any questions? And the last one is 7240, Drug-Free and Alcohol-Free Workplace. There's a change in Section D. It clarified that school officials are no longer required to contact an applicant's previous employers in most cases. But the note did say, as of January 6, 2023, querying the drug and alcohol clearinghouse is the exclusive means of complying with 49 CFR 40.25 with respect to employers regulated by the Federal Motor Carrier Safety Administration. So administrators and school officials must still contact an applicant's previous employers to get references and things of that nature, which is regulated by the U.S. Department of Transportation Agency and other, other than the FMCSA, which is the Federal Motor Carrier Safety Administration. Any questions?
Thank you. We're going to approve these. So board members, we need to approve policy. You have a question? Okay.
I just want to say thank you. I wanted to make a statement. The reason why we don't have questions is because everything was so clearly outlined. So I want to say thank you for, for that work. So if anyone in the public is interested in understanding what is changing, you can look at the policy that it's on board docs, that writes it in red, and so you can see what was changed, if anybody wants to follow them. But there's no questions because you prepared everything wonderfully, so thank you.
Ms. Burns? She set me up really well before she left. Okay.
I did have something that just doesn't read well on the 4240, the change on page two. Is that, is there too many things that are crossed out, or what is that supposed to?
4220.
Number one there.
Child abuse. Is that the B1?
Yes.
Should, it should read, "A sexual offense which, for purposes of this policy, the board interprets to mean any offense that relates to inappropriate, it should be sexual content with or involving a child."
Okay, so there's too many words that have been crossed out.
Thank you for catching that.
Okay, any other questions? Okay. So I need a motion to approve the policies as read on second read. Ms. Lindsay?
I feel like the class is like nerd, because I'm like the one, I make the motion to approve the policies as read.
I need a second. Mr. Farr? Okay, so we have Ms. Lindsay making the motion and Mr. Farr making the second. All those in favor of approving the policies on second read as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, this motion passes. Okay, we will keep you here for 10.05 and the 2023-24 Academic Calendar Revisions, or CHSI.
Yes, so a little bit of background here. It was brought to our attention that there was a slight difference in the calendars for the early colleges and then our new Health Sciences Institute. We were off by a day, so Principal Velez Hyde wanted us to make an adjustment for a planning day, and all it really does is change the planning day from January 16th to February 216. And that's because the Health Sciences Institute is affiliated with the Cabarrus College, and our early colleges are affiliated with RCCC. And so we were off by a day. So luckily, they were diligent in their watching of our calendar and let us know before we started next school year. So going forward, I will tell you that the early colleges will have their separate calendar, and the Health Science Institute will have theirs. So then that will give us a total of four calendars that we'll be bringing forth for you.
Any questions? No questions? Okay. So we'll take a vote. Board members, I need a motion to approve the academic calendar revisions as presented. Ms. Escobar?
Samu.
I need a second. Mr. Walter? So we have a motion by Ms. Escobar, and a second by Mr. Walter. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion passes. Thank you very much, Dr. Ward. We're glad to have you with us.
Thank you.
Okay, board members, we are going to move to 10.06, which is the 2023-24 Capital Plan. And I know we've had two-by-two meetings about this, but I'll turn this over to Dr. John Kapicki.
Thank you, Mrs. Attcock. Board members and to our public, this is the capital plan that we proposed and talked about over the last week or so, in our meetings with you and our two-by-twos. Nothing has changed as to what we had stated we were going to recommend to our county. Our Brown McAllister, as you know, is underway and being built. There are discussions taking place for the purchase of land in the Southern High School for the future. As we had just, as Dr. Ward had just presented the calendar to you in regards to the switch there, clearly Cabarrus Health Science Institute is up and running, and our Dominique Filo's Hyde, our principal, has done a phenomenal job through the two of actually introducing two new bachelor programs, one being to get your nursing degree there, and you can also get a biomedical degree there as well. So clearly that, that Health Science Institute is becoming a, one of the, one of the crown jewels in the district, and Ms. Filo's Hyde is doing a fantastic job. So we need a long-term solution to make sure that we continue to be able to house our 240 seats. And next year will be our second class coming in, which will bring us to 120 students, and then each year after thereafter we'll have 60 students to 240. So our proposal is to put that on that parking lot where the Cabarrus College of Health and Sciences exists. It would be, if you're facing it, it would be right to the left of it. Am I right on that, Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Okay, just have my geography, my, 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 my brain wired into where that location is. As we talked over with the board about expanding the Royal Oaks Arts High School Edition, so that our kids have continuous opportunities and access to the resources that we can provide to them in terms of performing arts, whether it be theater, dance, music, art. They continue to excel there, and we feel as though that we can quite adequately add that to become a K-12 Performing Arts Center. Mr. Lauter and myself went out there to look at the land, and he has assured me that we have the capacity to build there. So we want to follow, we use the number 240 students because we want to follow the early college model, and in fact, will apply for an early college. Beginning in June of this year, we will make application to become an early college, so that's the model we will follow there. The Opportunity School, as you know, currently is housing the Glenn Center. One of our goals long-term is to remove our employees and our students from that facility and to get into a, a newer building, which we could build on the existing, where the PLC Center is right now. We have eight acres there to put a new Opportunity School there, and that will remove us from the Glenn Center. If we renovate the, the old our Brown McAllister and move the Mary Frances Wald daycare into that building, that not only increases our capacity from 300 kids, probably somewhere around 375 to 400, which would be 175 to 100 more tuition, tuition-paying students into that, that situation, which would increase revenue for us, but would also then give us the opportunity to take the Mary Frances Wald Center, move our technology and our auxiliary services, our accountability services up to that building, and it would get us out to Glenn Center altogether, therefore saving both the county and school district much-needed funds. Then we have some facility needs that we'd like to capture, some of the large projects. We have two middle schools that are without auditoriums that we would like to place, those being CC Griffin and Harris Road, correct? So we want to add auditoriums there. That is an equity issue. It's hard to provide that for other middle schools, and then these two middle schools do not have it. It's not, it's not equitable. It's just plain and simple. Also, for years, we have, we have been asking for athletic field funding, and again, through Carol's hard work and a lot of conversation, we're finally able to address some of those needs. So some of those needs include proposing to do the track and field at Hickory Ridge High School to turf that field, which would then give us turf fields at all of our schools, with the exception of Northwest, which we'd anticipate when that school is built in the very near future, that that would be a turf field, therefore giving us turf fields at all of our high schools. There are also some tracks that we'd like to address. Central Cabarrus High School track needs to be fixed, completed, renovated, rehabilitated, pick the word, but it's not in great condition right now. We need to do something there. Cox Mill High School's track needs to be addressed, and there are 12 tennis courts that we want to address as well, like Central Cabarrus High School, Northwest High School, and Cox Mill High School. So these are, these are our proposals that we're going to bring to the county, and these are the same conversations that we've had with the board over the last seven to 10 days, and not much has changed. The total of all this would amount to roughly $47 million. So our recommendation is to propose this capital plan to our county when we meet in the next two months.
Okay, board members, any questions? Ms. Sandage?
I just wanted to say thank you for the innovation and the forward thinking here. I've heard a lot of things that I have not heard in other districts that are happening here in Cabarrus. So I just wanted to say I appreciate this, this plan. So I just wanted to say I appreciate this plan and leave it there.
Anyone else? Ms. Escobar?
I'll echo that as well, but I would like to stress my frustration overall with not really addressing the west side of the county and putting that high school not in the top seven. Northwest Cabarrus High School, that is disappointing. And then on top of that, that there's not even addressing of purchasing of land on our side of it, on that side of the county either. And I recognize why this is the way it is, but I think our numbers are going to show that we need to address where the growth is. And so we'll have a realignment study. And so I think that's going to change the priorities in the next year. But I appreciate this for what it is. I think it's important that we have that opportunity for students for performance, to be a top school district in the state or in the country. It makes sense, and I really appreciate that idea coming forward.
Mr. Walter?
So I also would like to kind of echo what Pam just mentioned. I do think, and I've had to kind of put this into my own brain too, is that a lot of the things that we had on the previous one, we were not going to have a complete and total realignment of the county when we had discussed that previously. So I think that just putting that into my mind, realizing, okay, a lot of this stuff that we're going to get back to prove the need for the money that we need from the county to build, that school will show in the realignment. And so I think, like she said, I do think that our priorities will change. And this is, and when this was done, I'll just give a little history on this, but when we did this the first time and have gone over it the years since, this is fluid. This has changed, I think, every single year that we've done this. So that was the purpose of this, was to be kind of a fluid document that we could look at every year, reassess as we needed to, and then, you know, do the same for the next year, so.
Mr. Walter?
Kind of echoing that, can we put a header on this that says Cabarrus County Schools and a date, so we can refer to it as the plan for such and such a date? Because it does not say that here at all. Again, it's a planning document. It's something that we can go to the county with and say, hey, these are the most important projects as of this particular date, and ask for funding. Because it all is dependent on the county commissioners and what's available. So as in previous years, almost none of it has been able to be funded. We're hopeful that we can knock some of these projects off because they're reasonable, reasonable projects that can get done. And that's why I think I'm supportive of it. I like the out-of-the-box thinking on some of it. But there's a whole lot more than just 12 projects that are needed here in this county, as Pam was referring to. And some of the projects that were on the previous one have fallen off, but I think are still a need, especially with some of the older schools. But I think the big one that stands out here to me is, you know, we're making a decision number four there that's converting a school to a K-12 school. We've never had a K-12 school before. That's a big deal. You're adding 240 students to that location. I mean, high school kids drive. Do we have parking? Is that even, we've got a parking. So that is a big deal if we're going to ask that to be funded, that we have to commit to we're making, having a K-12 school here in Cabarrus County, which I think is a good thing that brings something unique again to what we're doing here in Cabarrus County. And it allows students who have a passion for arts to showcase that all through their schooling years. So those are good things. But that is a big change, something we've never done before. So there is a lot of out-of-the-box thinking on this plan. But so we'll present this to the county, and hopefully there's some funding that can really knock some of these off. But again, there's more than 12 projects here. There's a lot more than just this funding that actually needs to get done.
Anybody else? Mr. Tredaway?
I'd like to echo the sentiments that we're trying to think about solutions from a fresh perspective. I appreciate that. I also like the balance of new versus taking care of what we have. And that can only happen if we can keep up with the growth. So I like the way it tries to strike that balance. The other thing, we just talked about entering into a realignment process. I think we're going to have to stop thinking of schools, districts as necessarily being what they are now. So when we refer to particular schools, that district may look a little different, and may look a little tweaked than what it is right now. And so I know I'm going to have to, I know learning is hard. Unlearning is even harder for me. So that's one of the things I'm going to have to do going forward.
Ms. Sandage?
I was just going to say, one of the things that I just highlighted when we were in our two-by-two meetings, and I think, you know, the other board member that was in there with me would agree, you know, safety is non-negotiable. If we are not funding safety, we are not doing what we set out to do. As a board member, I am not doing my job if I don't advocate for things on this list that are required to meet safety parameters for our students in these buildings. So I just want to echo that out loud, and, you know, take it for what you want. Safety is important. We talk about safety often. And again, if we are not providing for that, then we're not doing what we're supposed to do. And that can be said for a lot of people.
The one item that I did fail to mention, built into this too on the facility needs is pre-K classrooms. So part of our goal long-term is to get at minimum at least two pre-K classrooms in every elementary school where the capacity exists. Currently, right now, Ms. Reeves, we have eight, 10? Yeah. We have eight right now. Our goal next year is to, we know we're going to add three, hopefully five. And we're working on that right now, so we're going to expand that as well. And that's very important to us. So the ask here is to put those two pre-K classrooms in because there's a lot of licensing issues that go into that, and there's also a lot of equipment and furniture you have to buy as well. So we want to fund that through this plan as well. And I want to emphasize, I thank you for all the kind words and the support, especially the support, that without your support, this goes nowhere. But I, you know, I would be remiss. I have a wonderful team of people around me, John McGrann, Dr. Bowers, Carol Herndon, Dr. Rock, Dr. Bisch, you know, Brian, Tim, everyone in this room that's helped me walking through this as we talked about this. Ben had a hand in it, Dr. Probst. And we really have talked this through over and over and over to make sure we're getting it right. And the thing I want to emphasize is, these are needs, not wants. We need these things in our school system to continue to be successful. And we have to echo that to everyone that we talk with, that these are needs, that we have to make sure we're serving the needs of our kids. And you hear me often talk about access, resources, and opportunities. These projects, when supported and fulfilled by our support from the county, addresses access for our kids to have those resources and opportunities to continue to pursue the excellence that they do here in the system. So we'll keep pushing, and I don't disagree with you. And, you know, we need to build schools too. We can't be mistaken about that. The realignment says it's going to help us make some of those decisions and inform us, but we definitely need a new elementary school. We definitely need that high school. We definitely need to look at renovating the middle school and take a looking at that Northwest area, because we know that's growing and how we're going to make our alignment for the elementary schools there. So none of those projects are off the table, and none of those projects have been forgotten. We are talking about them, but what we're saying right now is we're trying to address these needs now because we can. And then the other needs down the road are going to be the bigger conversation as to when that realignment starts, because that is their support, where we put certain funds on schools and how we build them. But we are going to need to build schools. I mean, our capacity is going to continue to be chewed up by the constant flow of students coming in here. I want to remind everyone, we're a growing district. We are not a shrinking district. We are a growing district. We are over 35,000 students for the first time in our history, and we continue to grow. And that growth, while presents a lot of challenges, is exciting as well. But I do believe that all of us together, working together, we can accomplish a lot of great things for our kids. And I appreciate the Board's support, and again, the great work that my cabinet did on this. So thank you.
Ms. Lindsay?
So I also wanted to just mention, just in the, just the vein of being transparent, in these two-by-two meetings that we had, that Ms. Sandage and I were in together, one of the things that we were presented with was just a list of 30-ish deferred maintenance issues that we have right now within the county. That was a list of like 30, 35 of 600-ish that are on the list of deferred maintenance issues. And just those 30-plus was like $7.1 million. And just to kind of give a point to Ms. Sandage and what she was talking about, as far as, these were health and safety issues. That's what those were. They weren't just wants. They were needs that we need in order to provide a safe environment for our children. So as we go to the county asking for money, these are things that we really need to consider. Thank you.
Anything else, Board members? Okay. Well, we're going to take a vote. I need a motion to approve the 2023-24 Capital Plan as presented.
I'm taking it from you, Laura. Fomo.
I need a second. Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Sandage, a second by Ms. Escobar. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? This motion passes. Okay, so this is the end of our March 6 work and business session. Thank you to our presenters, our public speakers, our board members for the great work we accomplished tonight. We had a lot on our plates. We're looking forward to seeing everyone at our next Monday night meeting on March 13th at J.M. Robinson High School for our Legislative Agenda Session. And our North Carolina State legislators, county commissioners, mayors, and CCA's leadership teams will be there. So now, Board members, we move to 11.01 to convene in closed session to consult with an attorney and preserve the attorney-client privilege pursuant to General Statute 143-318-11A3, and to consider confidential personal matters pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A6. I need a motion to convene in closed session. Ms. Escobar?
So moved.
I need a second. Thank you. So I have a motion by Ms. Lindsay, a second by Mr. Ferr. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, we are now in closed session. I'd also just like to say that Ms. Lindsay has won the award tonight for the Roberts Rules of Order, giving the highest number of motions of the evening.